All right, welcome to the February 12th, 2018, meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation, and today's invocation is being offered by one of my favorite people in Orlando, Beth Hobart, who is a proud UCF grad, she's a local realtor who I can say is extremely passionate about her community. She lives in Commissioner Sheehan's district, I had an opportunity to go to an open house when they moved in, or I guess you just moved in, but shortly after they moved in, and it was from 12 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock at night, so that is one long walk. She currently sits on the Orlando City Foundation Board, which provides free soccer programming and focuses on urban gardens, she sits on the Historic Preservation Board for the city, volunteers with Rebuild Globally, which is a not-for-profit that fights poverty through education and job training in Haiti, is also a volunteer with Quest as a way to give back to the community. Beth and her husband Jim are the founders of Local Love Orlando Foundation, which helps raise money by creating art-focused events for small, local not-for-profits. She's an alumni of the Downtown Orlando Partnerships Connect DTO, inaugural class alumni of the Leadership Orlando, and a graduate of the Mayor's City Academy, and in her spare time, after the invocation will be led, the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Stewart, so you may stand or remain seated.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, city commissioners, staff, and fellow citizens. I'm here today to tell you why living in Orlando has changed my life. I've called Orlando home for over two decades, and my husband Jim and I are UCF grads that have built our businesses here. Over that time, we have had a lot of support from our local community. We have seen this community evolve into an inclusive place overflowing with heart and love, filled with inspiring people who dream big, who make things happen, and have real, long-lasting impact. Orlando is a place where small businesses and nonprofits work together to thrive and give back, and where they support each other and collaborate for the greater good of the community. We also have an amazing art community, which has grown into a strong vehicle for bringing people together. After seeing all of this possibility over the years, Jim and I founded Local Love Orlando Foundation. This foundation brings awareness to local, small nonprofits like Zebra Coalition, for example, and helps raise money by creating art-focused events that bring the city, the community, together for a shared cause that we all believe in. I have never felt such a strong connection or a sense of community as I do here, and I don't believe that what I have experienced here is typical in most cities. Orlando is truly a special place. Because of leaders like you, there are opportunities for growth and connectivity that is specific to this community, so I want to encourage you as leaders to keep listening, keep showing up, keep pushing for growth, and supporting your constituents, your small, local businesses and nonprofits. You're inspiring others, like me, like Jim, like so many people in this community, to get involved and affect change, and my life has been forever changed by this community, its leaders, and its citizens. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Beth, that was a great way to start our meeting. I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the order, call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is the consideration of minutes from the January 22nd workshop age interview and city council meetings, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so the motion carries, that brings us right into wards presentations and recognitions, and I'd like to call on Marcia Hope Goodman, our Chief Service Officer and Director of the Office of the Community Affairs and Human Relations, and she's going to give us an overview of our 2018 Black History Month events.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be with you and to everyone here. I'd like to say that this is a tradition that the city has done for as many years as I know, that we have recognized Black History Month as an annual national celebration that recognizes the achievements of African-Americans and their significant contributions, not only to American history, but world history. These contributions have impacted people in every facet of our society and our country. Black History Month focuses on the values that have propelled and sustained African-Americans through the years, values like unity, of purpose, creativity, competence, sacrifice, and faith. Events this month emphasize the courage and determination demonstrated by African-Americans in their journey to have a society that fully lives up to our democratic ideals. And since 1976, every US president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Mayor Dyer and city commissioners will celebrate Black History Month in the city with an event tomorrow evening, a reception in the rotunda, and Mayor and commissioners, we had RSVPs coming in until last week, and we are at capacity, so we think we're going to have a great representation of our community there, and this year we are partnering with the Association to Preserve African-American Society, History, and Tradition, which is known as PAST, Inc., and today they are represented by our partners, Senator Geraldine Thompson, the founder and board chair of PAST, and Elizabeth Thompson, the executive director, to honor and recognize on tomorrow evening six of Orlando's local leaders who are the first African-Americans in education, healthcare, the judicial system, diplomacy, and public safety. And I'm thinking whether I should share who they are or let it be a surprise tomorrow, but I will share, I got the cue from the commissioners. For the first in education, it's Ron Blocker, who was our first African-American superintendent of schools, Orange County Public Schools. In healthcare, the first African-American chief medical officer and physician CEO of a major health system is Monica, Dr. Monica Reed. In public safety, we have two firsts, and both in Orlando, so congratulations, commissioners. We have the first African-American police and fire chief, Police Chief Jerry Demings and Fire Chief Charlie Walker, and of course Jerry, Sheriff Demings is also the first African-American sheriff in Orange County, and we also will be recognizing the first African-American chief judge of the Ninth Judicial Circuit Court, and that is our own Judge Emerson Thompson, Jr., and the first African-American United States Ambassador in the city of, who lives in the city of Orlando, and that's Ambassador Harriet Elam Thomas. So tomorrow evening we'll have a recognition, and we hope that many of you will be there, and commissioners, we look forward to having you there, and this event continues to support the city's commitment to inclusion, respect, and diversity, and our advocacy for human rights and humanity for all people. So at this time, Mayor, if you would read the proclamation, I would ask our partners from PAST and our staff from our office and the city who have worked with us to come forward for the photo.
Okay, proclamation, city of Orlando, whereas Black History is an integral part of American history because African-Americans have played an essential role in building and shaping this great country, and whereas Black History Month is celebrated each February and was originated by the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, founded in 1915 by Carter G. Woodson, an African-American historian, author, and journalist, and whereas throughout Black History Month, we recognize the extraordinary achievements and acknowledge of many contributions African-Americans have made in our nation, our state, and our city, and whereas 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of one of the most tragic, catalytic, meaningful events in American history, the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., who led the civil rights movement in the 50s and 60s, and whereas the city of Orlando embraces its diversity, believes in inclusion, and acknowledges the invaluable contributions of African-American residents and visitors as we celebrate Black History Month, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the month of February 2018 as Black History Month in the city of Orlando.
And Commissioner Hill, and Commissioner Ings.
Can we have Geraldine say something? Mayor, can we have Geraldine say something?
We were going to have a photo, Commissioner Ings, did you want to see?
Senator, did you want to say anything?
Oh, please, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I think in our country today, we see a lot of polarization, and I believe in order for us to have a greater appreciation for all of our journeys, we have to understand all of our stories, and so African-American History Month gives us an opportunity to tell the story of America, to tell the story of Florida, from the perspective of African-Americans. And I think if we have more intergroup understanding and appreciation, we will be more cohesive as a nation, and so we are very pleased to partner with the city of Orlando for the 2018 observation of Black History Month. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I might be out of protocol, but in the vein of that, can I ask my fellow colleagues to come and stay with us?
Sure.
Thank you.
Please join us for the photo.
Okay, let's go ahead and do the mayor's update. Saturday, we hosted the 13th Annual Neighborhood and Community Summit, and we had about 400, representation from 400 neighborhood associations, not-for-profits, civic and faith-based groups, we had a full day of networking and learning, special thanks to Bob Kotzis, who is from Flight of Ideas, and Susan Lilly, our poet laureate, who started the morning off with some very creative energy, and I want to acknowledge that we presented the Neighborhood Champion Award this year to Shirley Bradley, that was very exciting, and the Community Builder Award to Second Harvest Food Bank, congratulations to both. Update on the Tinker Field History Plaza, construction on the plaza has begun, and as part of this project, we are offering individuals and companies an opportunity to participate in the Legacy Brick Program. It's an opportunity, it's available for a limited amount of time, and you can learn about that on our website, and I want to thank Commissioner Hill again for her leadership on this project. This is the last time that we will be in chambers for a while, we've been renovating, no, we haven't canceled all our meetings, we're just relocating them, we've been renovating the building, and we are going floor by floor, so whichever floor is being renovated moves up to the ninth floor, so the third floor just finished our time up on nine, and the second floor is the next one to go under renovation, so we will be moving our city council and board meetings to the Terrace Gallery, starting with the next meeting, which is February the 26th, so we'll continue to put all of our meeting information up on the website, but the meetings will probably be a little bit more streamlined, we're probably not going to have as many presentations, we certainly won't be bringing in football teams and soccer teams, the capacity in the Terrace Gallery is going to be a little bit limited, probably about 70 seats total, but we will have ancillary viewing areas that will set up if there's overflow, that the public can view and then come in as appropriate if somebody needs to have an opportunity to speak, so Terrace Gallery next time. And I just want to mention one thing that is on the agenda, we're going to seek approval of a lease agreement for land located on the corner of Orange and Robinson, which will be a pop-up park. The lease agreement will support one of the vision themes from Project DTO, which is being an awesome outdoor city, and I'm really excited about that one, and thank you to the Dr. Phillips Organization for cooperating and making that property available. All right, that's all of I have, so we're going to move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda are a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our city council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda, as well as items that are important from their districts, and just before we go into that, I want to mention that without objection, we're going to pull item J1, which is a transportation item, and it needs a little more work with the Department of Transportation, and we'll probably bring that back to the next meeting if we can get a couple little issues resolved on that one. And then secondly, I want to recognize for the record that the MPP minutes include an item 0N 2017-10006 relating to 544 North Bumbi, and then a neighboring property owner is represented by Allison Yerko, they're here today, they'll be raising an objection to the PD at the first reading, this is just the minutes that are being approved, and you can't change the minutes, the minutes are what they are, but the first reading for that PD will be on February 26th, and Allison, you can come and represent your client and let us know what your objections are at that point. Okay, that will move to our commissioners, and we rotate the order we do that, and first up today is Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start by, by condolences from, from me and from my friends, to the family and friends of Sid Levy, Sid passed away last month, he was a wonderful philanthropist, but I got to know Sid pretty well a few years ago when he commissioned and helped pay for, and paid for most of it, I should say, the Duskegee Airman Monument over Orlando Science Center. If you hadn't had a chance to see that, it's called The Missing Man, it was a wonderful addition to science, aviation, and history together over there, so Sid will certainly be missed. There's not an office that you don't go into in ours down that doesn't have something from United Trophy, and the mayor have got several hundred of those things, so he's had incredible impact on our community, so I'm going to say thank you to that. Next is last Saturday, I had the opportunity to be at Mitchell Nutter Park, some of y'all may or may not remember or know about Mitchell Nutter Park, Mitchell Nutter Park was named in 1970, I guess '73, by former Mayor Carl Langford in memory of Officer Mitchell Nutter, who was killed in the line of duty. We had an opportunity to be there and to recognize the 50th commemoration, 50th anniversary of his passing. Now, this is an idea that started years ago with a firefighter, one of our firefighters, Lieutenant Davis Odell. Davis had recognized that, saw that, wanted to memorialize that in many ways, and for the last 10 years has been going over there and just spending time remembering Officer Nutter on February 10th of every year. A few years ago, they realized they were coming up on the 50th anniversary, he began to work with some of the neighborhood leaders, Ryan and Melissa Bertram, and they put together a wonderful event that we had the opportunity to participate in, and so I'm so grateful for that. Chief Mina, Deputy Chief Smith was there and did a wonderful, wonderful job, honored to have him there, Byron Brooks was there, and we had some OFD, OPD, OPD Patrol, and what was going to be a kind of a small little get-together ended up being about 75 to 100 people, just to say thank you for the life of him. His daughter came down from North Carolina to be here, and we had a chance to honor her and provide some gifts to her from the city of Orlando, so I want to say thank you, especially I want to say thank you to Tara Russikoff, Tara was there, helped us out a great deal, all of our staff did. I won't bore you with all the details, but I know that some of you may be able to see this, this is a little flyer we did about Mitchell Nutter, and it's a wonderful, wonderful asset to our community, and it was missed, but it reminded me to say this, to say this one thing, and that we say often that we are not going to forget, and this was the life of a person who died 50 years ago, and we did not forget, and so I'm so honored by that, just to be part of that. One small bit of trivia, I had a chance to bring my brother there, who was actually at the dedication of the ceremony of the same park, 40, in 1973, 45 years ago or so, and it was neat to be able to kind of connect those two together, it was really kind of Some other quick things, some of y'all have began to see a large tower over near the intersection of Highway 50 and I-4, that's our pedestrian bridge, that's the first leg of that on one side, you'll soon see the other leg start to go up as well, so I'm kind of excited about that happening, it's going to be kind of fun, I noticed that, all of a sudden, you don't seem to notice it, and then it's there, so that was great. Some upcoming news briefly, we still need the input from the community on the Corrine Drive study, our next pop-up meeting will be, take place at 1:00 PM at Lou Gardens on Saturday, February 24th, but you can always go to the Metro Plans website and give us your input, and give us your thoughts about what's going on. And one of my favorite events has taken place this weekend, it's the annual Orlando Wetlands Festival, taking place Saturday on February 17th, we have a flyer, you can go online and get the information, it's just a great chance to be out there and enjoy the, see what we do in Orlando Wetlands, and see the way we handle some of our waste, I say waste disposal, but solid waste disposal, and how we clean water, which is fascinating to me. Two quick things I'd like to share, number one, congratulations, Mayor, Dr. Larry Mills is a wonderful asset to the OUC Board, and I'm honored to support him, he's just a wonderful community asset. And this next, I want to say thank you to our staff on C-16, that was a golf view replat, and I appreciate so much the work that Dean and his staff did, that came to us, if y'all remember, a while back, as a, and needed some additional work on it, they took it back, made that, made that happen, now it's come back with a replat, and it's going to be a good asset over there on Par, on Par Street. And that's all that I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll move to Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and this week Doug Getzlow passed away, he was a resident of District Four and ran Axitax, and even though Doug and I didn't agree on much politically, he always brought up his concerns in a very gentlemanly way, and you know, far too often we only talk to people who agree with our point of view, and Doug often brought up things that sometimes I needed to consider, and I appreciate that, and I hope everyone will keep Stacy and the family in their prayers, because he passed suddenly, it was very unexpected, and we will certainly miss Doug, if not, for his passion, and maybe not his message, but certainly his passion, so again, rest in peace, Doug Getzlow. I also want to commend, oh, you see, that was an excellent choice on Dr. Larry Mills to represent an OUC Board. On the agenda today, the Davis Lake Greenwood has been rebid, I would rather see us rebid the contracts in Public Works rather than have really bad contractors and delays like we had on Summerlin for years, so I'm glad that Public Works is on top of that, and even though we may have a bit of a delay, we're going to get a good contractor to make sure that we get this on time. Also on today's agenda is the Colonial Town Stormwater Improvements, again, not very sexy, but important to the residents of Colonial Town, and the Oregon bricks will be replaced, I want to thank Streets and Stormwater and Public Works on that again, and item F1, United Against Poverty is doing a great job helping people in need, I think there's a lot of opinion that there's no social services in District Four, I'm very proud of this organization, we did 513,000 in CDBG funding, this agency is very important to District Four and their mission, and the city of Orlando has been very supportive of United Against Poverty, so we certainly, we certainly support the work that they do. On item I1, Darrell Christopher, I'm very glad to see that he's been promoted to his sanitation supervisor, Darrell works really hard in District Four in my neighborhoods, and I think he does a fantastic job. And on item J2, Safe Streets Academy Pilot Program, I'm very glad to see this happening along Curry Ford Road, anything that we can do to bring awareness to pedestrian safety in the city of Orlando, because we've got so many, you know, we still have that unfortunate moniker of being one of the number-one pedestrian fatalities cities in America, I'm delighted to see this, want to really thank Billy Haddaway for his, for his leadership on this pilot program, hopefully we can expand this throughout the city. And one other thing that I had, Mayor, on item C10 on the MPB meeting, we do have some folks here who have some concerns, and I certainly support and have supported all the time, the ability of anyone to appeal a decision, and apparently that didn't happen this time. Maybe staff can meet with, with folks and see if we can get this worked out before we, before it comes forward for the first reading, but again, you know, we do have a process for appeal and everything like that, maybe that wasn't clear, but you got to, you got to make that appeal when you got that chance, because that's kind of your chance to, to object or to have input, and I hope we had, I thought we had gotten most of the issues worked out, but hopefully with staff, maybe we can get together and, and see what the issues are, and if we can work with, with Mr., with Richie, and see if we can get that worked out on 544 North Bumbi, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, we'll move to Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, I also want to give my condolences to the Getzlow family, like you said, he was someone that you could respect or be feared, he, I remember a funny story about him when I first was running, I didn't even know who Doug Getzlow was, but come to find out, he supported me, and I found out about him, I, there was a flyer in the mail with me on a horse with Ronald Reagan, and she's, she is a fiscal conservative, I said, out of this, because I'm a staunch Democrat. And coming to find out, Doug did it, and he was saying, you need some Republican support, so that's my funny story about Doug, but through the last four years, he has been a great supporter, and when it seemed like there was things he didn't agree with, he would call me up, and I would answer his phone call every time, so my condolences to the Getzlow family, and his children, he did love the city, and he loved his country. Again, congratulations, and a great decision, Mayor Dyer, with Dr. Larry Mills, appointing him to the OUC Commission Board, he is a staunch, staunch, I'd say supporter of this city, but also Central Florida, I mean, he's, his leadership is compared to none spiritually and from a corporate standpoint, so congratulations, Dr. Mills, with your new appointment. Also, as it was stated, Mayor Dyer, I had over 40 participants from District Five, from my office alone, that RSVPed, that through the help of our communications team, we registered to come to the mayor's summit, for some reason, this is always a big deal in District Five, they love this summit, they get up early, I have seniors, and thanks to mirrors, that provide transportation, and I look over Facebook, and they just are always talking about how nice you were, and how much they enjoy the luncheon, and also the camaraderie of meeting people throughout the different neighborhoods throughout the city, so I heard it was a huge success, and sounds as if I, wasn't, I was a little under the weather this Saturday, but sounds as if it was a huge success, and it keeps growing year after year. And with that being said, Ms. Shirley Bradley, which is HO mem- And with that being said, Ms. Shirley Bradley, which is HO member and president in District 5, for her service for decades here in the city, and also in my tenure, I'd like to say congratulations, but this year also, Jalen Alexander, that has been roaming the halls of City Hall, since he's been 12 years old, from what I understand, and now he's almost 18, and on his way for political science there at UCF, and is my chief of staff over my youth advisory board, but also a intern in my office, and kid knows everything about government, he knows every phone number, every extension, every email, and every department that you need to call, and I just can't say enough about you all awarding Jalen the humanitarian award, which is so deserving, I've never seen a kid that wants to serve his city, and also so respectful. So with that, also on the, I'm really excited today about our business and economic development pieces here on our agenda, there today is over $2.2 million of awards and contracts to MWBEs, and oftentimes I get throughout my community about, yes MWBEs, but are there really African Americans that's getting the contracts? And I'm glad to report today, over 50% of African Americans with this $2.2 million that's being awarded in contracts are African American companies, but most of them, the majority also, the other 49-plus percent is women, so I'm really excited about what we're doing over in our MWBE department, and also in our procurement, so kudos to you all for making sure that this is all-inclusive when it comes to finding MWBE contractors to be a part of the economic development here in the city of Orlando. On D-4, it's your, in the housing, it's District 4, but there's a CDBG grant of $513 to help with United Poverty, and they are organization that's down in the Michigan Street area, that helps with preventive homelessness, but also empower, empowering the working poor, I just, I don't like the term the working poor, I like working folk, everyday working folk, and they help with so many resources, and educational, from a health component, and I don't think there's a better organization to help with expanding that campus, so congratulations to United Poverty Against Homelessness. On ordinance first read, we have something that's outside of the CRA, but it's there in the Paramore West Moreland Corner, which has been a very blighted area for at least a decade or greater, at the Old McNamara Campus, which was a car lot, and there is some developers that have came in, that today will be making it a versus industrial, a mixed-use area, to where they have came in with a plan to make office use, restaurant space, to redevelop that corner, which now will be the anchor of redeveloping that corner from OBT and hopefully all the way down Colonial, it is a Asian developers, they're Vietnamese, and which I really appreciate about this project is, they came in, they purchased the property already, but with Dean Grandin, I don't know if Dean's here, Dean Grandin's leadership, they did come in to speak with me, and they wanted to make sure that they were all-inclusive, that it wasn't an isolated project, that they will be hiring those in the Paramore community to, for some of, and offering, offering, community space, office space, and also the building, I informed them about the UCF Valencia Construction Program that we have there in Paramore Mayor, and they want to make sure that those students are a part of building that major project there, so with that being said, economic development is truly key in my next four years, and I'm glad to see that multimillion dollar project going. And last but not least, there is a vision plan that has been completed there in the Mercy Drive Corner, I know Mayor and your state of the city, and is Mercy Drive is a key focus of yours in development, and the revitalization of that area, and it was work that had been started way before you made that announcement, there, I think we started way in February, April, May, Eric timeframe, working with Kane and Associates, coming with the community, and this isn't a city vision, I'm proud to say this is a community vision, the community met in several, at least four charrettes, our team, our planning department went out and did walk-alongs with the community several times, they got data from the old census, but put new census together, we can't call it a census, but new data for us to go on, on how to redevelop the Mercy Drive Corner, and the folks said they needed adequate and workforce housing, they said they wanted health components, they wanted traffic calming, and all those things that they stated that they were happy about there in that corner, and things that they were concerned about in that corner, and some new and innovative things that were happening around the country, we compiled in that vision plan, and on February the 20th, we'll be presenting their plan to that community, I'm glad to say, with Chief Mina's support, some of the concerns were safety, and that is already under the way, two weeks ago or so, with the support of Chief Mina, the partnership, collaborative partnership of Sheriff Jerry Demmons, and under the auspice of the Urban League, those jobs and opportunities in crime prevention, under Operation Ceasefires now underway, and it's not a incarceration program, this is an empowerment program, where they're going out and working with those that might feel as there's no opportunity, feel as though their only thing that they can do is live a life of crime. The two law enforcement agencies, Urban League and the city of Orlando, have partnered together to empower those in the Mercy Drive, District 5 and District 3 Corner, also with the support of our Commissioner Stewart, I'm very excited about Pine Hills, and most definitely Rosemont, and Mercy Drive is on the rise, and with that report, I'm completed, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, we'll move to Commissioner Raines.
Thank you Mayor, I'd also like to extend my condolences to the family, and also the United Trophy family of Sid Levy, Sid also founded the Flea World, Flea World at Seminole County, so Sid has really been involved in the community, he's assisted me, even with the Red Tie Celebrity Golf Event, he's been a sponsor in that event for the past seven years, so I really express my condolences on his loss. I'd also like to congratulate via Item A-1, Dr. Larry Mills, pastor, and also retired Lockheed Martin Vice President on the OUC Board, and he replaces Dan Kirby, who's done an outstanding job in that capacity, as a Commissioner for the OUC Board. I'd also like to express condolences to the family and friends of the Honorable Bruce B. Mount, a gentle giant who passed away on January 29th, and Mayor Mount was a mayor, former mayor of Eatonville, Florida, so Mayor Mount has done some great things for the city, been very progressive in his ways, he even gave Orange County Mayor Teresa Jacobs the key to the city, so he was reaching out in so many ways, and I just really want to honor him, he died on January the 29th, and on January the 26th, I hosted the 2018 World Conference of Mayors VIP reception here at the Orlando City Hall, and this entire event was dedicated to Mayor Bruce Mount Senior, a proclamation was given, naming Mayor Bruce Mount Day in the city of Orlando, his children, Attorney Bruce Mount Jr. was there to receive as well as his sister Shana Mount. The World Conference of Mayors was also attended by the former mayor of Tuskegee, Alabama, Mayor Johnny Ford, who was the founder of the World Conference of Mayors, the National Policy Alliance, and the Historic Black Towns and Settlements Alliance, so this was a great event, and when we declared Mayor Bruce Mount Day in the city of Orlando, three days later, Mayor Mount passed away, so that's really sad, and also, two, three years ago, during his reelection time, his wife had passed away, so her funeral was being held during the time of their election. Also, on January 26th, the same night, I had to run over to the Orlando Science Center, Valencia College was celebrating its 50th anniversary, and they were honoring the 2018 Valencia College Distinguished Alumni Awards, myself was a recipient of this award, as well as Mayor Rich Crowdy, former Mayor Rich Crowdy of Orange County, and former State Representative Dick Bachelor, and then there were others that also received this award. I attended the first annual Ecclestone Legacy Ceremony, and the Legacy Ceremony honored Father Nelson Pender, this event was held in the Rufus Brooks Cafeteria at Ecclestone Elementary, this was their first time doing it, so it was an inaugural event, very well-attended, Regent McGill and his Alpha brothers were there, because Father Pender is an Alpha, and so they were in support, but we did have some Omega men there in support, because Father Pender taught me, when I was attending college there at Rollins College, and so it was just really a great opportunity for us to see this happen to Father Pender, as a matter of fact, Father Pender reminded us that it was Commissioner Mabel Butler that had introduced him to Dr. Ecclestone, and wanted him to go to Ecclestone and volunteer. Ecclestone was a hospital, and it was for disadvantaged children, and so Father Pender was there even as a young man, starting out doing great things for our community. February is Black History Month, and we just celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday in January 2018, Dr. King fought for nonviolence, he fought for equal justice, he fought against discrimination, against blacks and African Americans, today, no dogs, no hoses of water, no beatings are being overtly used against blacks and African Americans, but there are more subtle techniques and ways used to deny, suppress, and discriminate against blacks and African Americans. The Civil Rights Movement, the struggle against segregation, the combating of racial inequality, the Poor People's Campaign, and Campaign Against Poverty, were the hallmarks of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s activism. The black communities suffer today throughout Orlando, the state of Florida, and the United States, discrimination and unequal justice and opportunities still exist today in our communities, and also our education, as we celebrate black history, we are reminded of the past, and as we celebrate black history, we are reminded of the continued struggles for equal justice, inclusion, sustainable communities, economic empowerment, safe communities, nondiscrimination, and equal treatment. What legacy are we leaving for African Americans or black communities? A nation or civilization that continues to produce soft-minded men purchases its own spiritual death on an installment plan, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Hatred paralyzes life, love releases it, hatred confuses life, love harmonizes it, hatred darkens life, love illuminates it, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I believe that the unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality, that is why right temporarily defeated is stronger than evil triumph, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So today, in celebration of Black History Month, we call for equal justice, thank you Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner, we'll move on to District 1.
Thank you Mayor, I was gonna, I've got 10 minutes worth of comments, but I'm gonna suspend those, and refer people to my website if you have any questions about past and future events, thank you all, yield.
Thank you Commissioner, we'll move to District 2, Commissioner Ortiz.
That was quick. I want to join other Commissioners and send my condolences to the family of Mayor Drew Mountain, he was indeed a great gentleman, and a great human being, and a friend, we shared quite some time at the Florida League of Cities, and even here at City Hall, he used to come here and visit every so often, so it's a great, it's a huge loss to our community, so our prayers are with his family, and I hope y'all's prayers are too, so. February the 8th, we celebrated the sixth annual Walk-A-Mile in Her Shoes, Mayor, I'm not gonna say how beautiful your shoes were, none of that stuff, okay, I'm not gonna talk about that, it was a great, it was a great event, as always, to remind us that domestic violence should not be tolerated, not only against women, but against men, against children, against anybody, domestic violence is just a big no-no, and I'm so glad that we have people like Michelle Spurcell and Millie Harris-Harris from Harbor House, working and reminding us of this every year, working hard for our community, so congratulations to them for a great event, and I want to thank them for their commitment and dedication to our community. And this past Friday, I joined Mayor Gary Brun, and Mayors and Commissioners from adjacent cities, for a press conference in front of our own very City Hall to address the issue of home rule, and for those that don't know what home rule is, I'm gonna read the definition here, pretty much, "The most precious powers a city in Florida has its home rule powers, the ability to establish its form of government through its charter, and to then enact ordinance, codes, plans, and resolutions without prior state approval." And right now, all that is in jeopardy, Florida is, the legislature keeps centralizing government and preempting a lot of our rulings at our city level, and it's something that we must, as a community, send a clear and strong message to our legislators in Tallahassee, and remind them that the closest people to, or the closest representative to the people are those in the municipalities, the mayor, the Commissioners, we're the ones dealing with our community on a daily basis, we're the ones listening to all the issues we have, from a dog barking to an issue with a street light or whatnot, and so who knows best what's going on in our communities but your local legislators, so I think we should communicate, and that's the greatest message, that legislators in Tallahassee, they should be listening to the local legislators and to the people locally, coming over, visiting more, and talking to our people, to see what the real needs of our community are, therefore, they could legislate wisely, not just following leadership, you elect them to represent you, not to represent a leader in Tallahassee or Washington for that matter, so that was the main theme, the main subject on Friday, and I know Mayor Brun did a great job delivering the message, but I think it's our time as citizens to join him, and let our legislators know that they should be listening to us, okay, because every city has different ways of governing. Because every city has different ways of governing, and we need to make sure that our legislators are representing us. So with that being said, I think we should all join the team. Well, with that, I take a motion to approve the agenda, Mayor.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed? So the motion carries. Then, I see a lot of unfamiliar faces today, and I'm guessing that some of them are students. If you are a student, would you stand and let us recognize you, please? Thank you for being here today. I know that it was optional, and you just chose to come on over. Your professor didn't suggest that being able to pass your course might be hinge on you attending a city council meeting, but I'm also sure you probably could have attended a county commission, or Osceola County, or something else, so we're pleased that you chose the City of Orlando, and thanks for being here today. Okay, how about, if without objection, we recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting? I'm gonna wait on number one, let's do the minutes, and then we'll have Thomas come and talk about the Streetscape Grant. So number two is the CRA Advisory Board minutes from December 6th. Is there a motion to accept those?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Three is approving CRA minutes from January 8th.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Four is approving the CRA minutes from January 22nd.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, back to number one, Thomas.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner's item number one is approving a downtown Streetscape matching grant for 20 North Orange Avenue. As you know, the CRA has established a Streetscape cost-sharing program, which provides financial assistance to certain qualified or eligible Streetscape projects on a matching basis within the redevelopment area. Steel Bridge 20 North LLC, owners of 20 North Orange Avenue, are completing significant renovations to their building. Included in those renovations are redesign of the first floor, which will now include several retail spaces, resale spaces, which we think will further activate that very important intersection of Main and Main, or North Orange Avenue and Central. The owners are also desirous of improving within the public right-of-way to Streetscapes surrounding the building on both Orange Avenue, as well as the Central Avenue, Central Boulevard side, those Streetscape improvements to include brick pavers, pedestrian lighting, landscaping, and irrigation. The CRA Advisory Board has recommended approval, and unless there are any questions, staff is requesting that CRA provide approval of the agreement with Steel Bridge 20 North LLC, providing funding of up to $155,374.07 towards the cost of such Streetscape project pursuant to and contingent upon the terms of disagreement and authorization for the chair and the executive director to execute the agreement, subject to review and approval of the city attorney's office.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this matter? Hearing, none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Further business, Thomas?
There's none. Thank you all.
There's no further business to come before the CRA, so the CRA will stand adjourned, and we will reconvene the city council meeting. We're now on hearings, ordinances, first reading. Madam Clerk, if you would read the first item.
Ordinance 2018-13, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning part of North Rosaline Avenue, generally located between Ridgewood Street and East Livingston Street, and part of East Livingston Street, generally located east of North Rosaline Avenue, together comprised of .390 acres of land, more or less, providing for the execution of affecting documents, severability, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. Twenty-one from the public that would like to testify on this matter. Discussion among Commissioners, hearing, none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Hearings, ordinances, second reading, Madam Clerk, number one.
Ordinance 2018-3, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to owner-occupied home sharing, amending Chapter 58, Part 5B, Land Development Code, modifying the bed and breakfast standards, and providing regulations for owner-occupied home sharing, amending Chapter 66, Part II, Land Development Code, to provide a definition of owner-occupied home sharing, amending Chapter 5, Orlando City Code, to provide for civil penalties, providing legislative findings, and for severability, codification, correction of scribners' errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, and second by Commissioner Sheehan. Okay, this is the short-term rental ordinance. We had quite a bit of discussion related to this. The ordinance itself has been modified pursuant to Commissioner Sheehan's request relating to duplexes from the last meeting, and I know that from agenda review, there's been three other ideas for proposed amendments, so I'd like Jason Burton to remind us exactly what's in the ordinance and why we're doing this, and then we'll take up various amendments as proposed. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, good afternoon. My name's Jason Burton, chief city planner. We had a lively discussion last council meeting about short-term rentals during the first hearing for this item, and this item requires two hearings because it changes the potential allowable uses within the city. So just to remind you all, short-term rentals or vacation rentals, as they're sometimes called, are generally lease periods that last less than 30 days, and you're familiar with Airbnb and other websites that do allow you to rent on a short-term basis. Our Consolidated Land Development Code of 1991 tried to classify these types of vacation rentals as commercial dwelling units, hotel motels and bed and breakfasts, and had specific zoning districts where they were allowed. In 2011, the state went ahead and preempted us, but they loosened that up in 2014. And the conclusions after those state legislative acts are that we cannot regulate the frequency or duration of short-term rentals, unless we already have one in place, which we did since 1991. We can completely deregulate short-term rentals if we so chose, but staff came up with a third option that we talked about last time, is allowing for reasonable accessory use or a subordinate amount of rooms, a hosted-only requirement, and one booking at a time. So just let me quickly review the elements of the program. We're only allowing for hosted visits, the resident that's in the unit must be present. That's the best types of code enforcement that we can hope for to keep down on parties and other secondary obnoxious issues, like noise, or trash, or having problems with people arriving at the wrong location. Single booking at a time, otherwise it's a full bed and breakfast. There are certain zoning districts where bed and breakfasts are actually allowed. They're not typically allowed in single-family residential zones, so if you have one person at a time, it's no different than having your parents visit you for the weekend, is the argument. But when you start to have multiple parties in your unit, it becomes more of a commercial venture. Online registration and posting of the registration on the websites will allow for a level of transparency and emergency contact information on the listings themselves, proof of residency requirements to make sure that somebody's actually within the unit itself, so it's not turned into a commercial dwelling unit. And then we're sunrising these provisions in July, so we have a chance to put in not only reasonable rules and regulations that you're passing today, but how do we get this online so people can register online and through our EDIS system? Related to this, bed and breakfast, right now we require that the property owner live on-site. We're also changing that to require that the proprietor live on-site, because it doesn't always happen to be that way. There are lots of community concerns regarding short-term rentals, and the folks that contact me seem to be in two camps. They really like it, or they really hate it. So the, the idea here is, is that there's a commercial use in the neighborhood, there's a reduction, long-term rental housing stop, and the nuisance complaints that we reviewed with you, our ordinance is sort of designed to limit these types of secondary nuisance effects with requiring that hosted visit. But there are lots of benefits as well, you know, encourages participation in the sharing economy, allows tourists to visit parts of their city that they typically don't get to visit, allows for cultural exchange, could provide an extra source of income for homeowners and long-term renters, and of course, could provide potentially temporary housing needs, and help with affordable housing availability when you can supplement your income with rents. Today, in front of you, in your second reading, we were diligent in trying to put together some language that would tie in duplexes, that was passed with the last hearing through your motion. This is the first paragraph where we get into owner-occupied home sharing, but also put in a clause, it's allowed in these areas or in two-family dwelling units as provided below, and here's the language in question. For two-family dwelling units, owner-occupied home sharing is permitted for an entire dwelling unit if the property owner occupies the other dwelling unit, and the living area of the unit for owner-occupied home sharing is equal to or less than the living area of the other dwelling unit. The two dwelling units must be under the same ownership. So that's, that's what we drafted with one of our assistant city attorneys, and sent it out in the ordinance that's before you today. Also, this, this, early this morning, you were wondering how many duplexes are actually owner-occupied, and how many are rentals. It's a very difficult question to track, but since we recently passed last year new legislation for the design of duplexes, at the initial, an initial study of that whole entire process in 2014, we went ahead and researched some of this out, and it was rather difficult to get, but since 1992 to 2013, we were able to ascertain that there were 311 total duplexes that were built. 254 at that snapshot in time in 2014 were rentals, or 82%. Forty-five were owner-occupied, or 14%, and 12 were actual owner-occupied, where both halves were owned by the same person. So luckily, we were able to fish back in our memory banks and pull this up for you. With that, I'm sure there's more questions that I'm here and available to ask for you.
Okay, questions, Jason? Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Ortiz.
Jason, go back to the last slide and just give me some more explanation. What's the difference between owner-occupied and owner-occupied both halves?
Let's say if you own and you actually live in that, that unit, you might have another owner next door, it could be rented to somebody else, but when you actually live in the unit and you own both halves, only occurs 12 times.
So it's 12 of those, but what is an owner-occupied? That means that they've split the, they split the building, and they have two owners?
Certainly. Because you could be homesteaded potentially in a duplex and actually, and have an owner that lives in one half of a duplex and the other half, because it can be condominiumized at the state level.
Okay. Along the same lines, this is 2014 data, what, what kind of increase do you think you've seen since then?
It's hard to speculate, but I would imagine it hasn't changed much from here. It's very difficult information to ascertain, but I, you'll see other institutional investors enter the market, whether it's the Milk District or other places, but we don't expect a lot of movement from these types of figures from this point in time. Certainly, this, this occurred, you know, over the time, and it's a little, we're a little bit further removed from the recession, where I suspect there may have been more rentals put out on the market for duplexes. So if anything, if I were to completely speculate, I would think that we would have more owner-occupied duplexes, but nevertheless, I, I can't imagine there being greater than 25% of our duplexes out there being owner-occupied.
And these are traditional duplexes with single building, two separate entrances?
Correct.
Attached?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll say some of my comments later on, just want to make sure I clarified. Is it, ask one other question, and I guess I'm trying to understand it. I've tried to read the language on the state of Florida, and we haven't had some of that discussion, so Kyle, will you do me a favor and try to help me understand? I've tried to read the ordinance, I mean, the proposed law, and read the recap. So try to explain to me the preemption issue, at least explain to us, on the 2011. So the idea is that if we address, is the question is if we address short-term rentals prior to 2011, then that, that stays there? If we didn't address it, it just goes away, and they can do whatever they want?
If you had an ord, if we had an ordinance on the books, and that ordinance existed prior to July, June 1 of 2011, then the current state preemption does not apply to your ordinance. So you can continue to apply and enforce that.
Yeah, but is that an ordinance on land use, or an ordinance on vacation rental?
On vacation rentals.
Okay.
And what it says is that, what the current preemption says, remember, as Jason mentioned to you, there's been two preemptions in state statute. There's the 2011 preemption, and then it was loosened up a little bit in 2014 to say that you own, that local governments could not regulate the duration or frequency, but could otherwise regulate vacation rentals, okay? But if you had an ordinance like we did, like we do, that is prior to June 1, 2011, we can continue to enforce that. Now, to confuse matters even more, there are two bills in the current legislature. One of them is SB 1400 by Stube, the other one is HB 773 by LaRosa, and both of those would, I think, strengthen the preemption, but both of them, as they're currently drafted, would maintain the grandfathering clause, which is good for us. That means that we can continue to have our ordinance that was adopted prior to 2011. And what's more, both of those two bills, as they're currently drafted, and of course, they can change between now and the end of the session, they would also make it clear that what we're doing here with what we call loosening the ordinance is specifically allowed. So we call this the downward departure clause, and we're happy to see that in there. But again, both of those could, could change between now and the end of session.
Okay, I'm, I apologize, but I'm, I'm still a little confused, so make sure I understand. What is our current vacation rental clause in our current law, that if the preemption stands, goes through, stands? I don't think we have a vacation.
We don't have an ordinance right now that, that uses the term vacation rental. Instead, what we have is a term called commercial dwelling unit, which by definition happens to be the same thing as vacation rentals and some other things, too.
Okay.
So there were not many ordinances in the state of Florida that used that precise term early on. There was, they used other terms in their zoning codes, such as commercial dwelling unit, okay? We interpret that commercial dwelling unit prohibition in the R1 and R2 zoning districts to effectively prohibit vacation rentals. Now, I should tell you one of, one of the things, one of the things, just to really get down in the weeds, is that there is a circuit court opinion out of South Florida that says that this grandfathering of any ordinance prior to 2011 only applies to ordinances that use that magic word, vacation rentals. Ours doesn't. Now, that circuit court opinion does not apply to us, and I personally think it was wrongly decided, because it would require a city council to use a term that was not commonly used in the year 2011. But I, but, but there is that circuit court opinion out there.
And I've put on your screens just what are current definitions for current dwelling units, where they're located and permitted, and where their conditional uses, and of course, where they're prohibited, just so you can refer to it. So this was the 1991 language that basically put limits onto where these types of use or vacation winters would be allowed to go inside the city.
Vacation, we're defined as less than seven days.
Correct. So since we had something, less than seven days would have to be a hotel or a motel, essentially, so those would go into other specific zoning districts that are typically higher zoning districts, not the 03 district that you see here, but the Activity Centers and Mixed Use zoning districts.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying, again, I apologize, but it's, it's been an important issue in my district. If we do nothing, and the current law goes through, we go back to this?
Right.
So that means that they're prohibited?
They're prohibited in the R1, R2, and Jason, R3s as well?
Yeah, R3, all the way up through R3D types of districts, but of course, they're naturally occurring on these websites. We have up to 2,000 of them. So if you want to proactively do something, having something like a registration process and allowing some reasonable amount of accessory use is kind of the basis that we've crafted the, the current ordinance upon.
I don't disagree with the philosophy of where you're going, I'm just trying to see where my boundaries are.
Mm-hmm.
So the boundaries are, it goes through, we go back to where it's prohibited, and now we have to do is figure out how to enforce that.
Correct.
Is that right? And so the only way we can enforce it is how we would have enforced it in 2011? Well, we couldn't create a new enforcement process, could we?
Yes, we can. The registration process that we've, we've discussed is a new proactive code enforcement process, rather than a passive one that we currently.
I don't disagree with the registration process.
Gotcha.
I'm asking the legal question. If we go back to 2011, we cannot create a way to enforce in 2016, or 2018, something prior to 2011, that's effectively a change and doesn't become grandfathered. So I'm looking at, the only way we could do that is how would we enforce it in 2011, which is standard code enforcement.
Standard, standard code enforcement is what we're doing today, but I don't know that you couldn't come up with a new enforcement mechanism, as long as you weren't that you couldn't come up with a new enforcement mechanism, as long as you weren't changing the substantive regulation to include a regulation of duration and frequency.
Correct.
So in other words, if you could concoct some new enforcement mechanism and go back to our existing ordinance, if that's what you wanted to do, yeah, you could come up with a new enforcement mechanism.
But we couldn't do a registration that would allow it if the state, we would be preempted to allow it unless we go back to 2011. So we'd have a separate ordinance that would just give us the definition of how we would enforce it. Otherwise, we could enforce it right away, we couldn't register, they wouldn't have to register, right? Because the state law would preempt that, but we could enforce it in a different way.
Necessarily, go ahead, Kyle.
I would say, one of the proposed preemption bills, the, the Stube bill, SB 1400, would forbid any local registration effort, okay? But it would require vacation rentals to give the local government their state license, okay? But otherwise, the, the LaRosa bill does not interfere, as it's written out, with our ability to adopt this ordinance, including the new registration requirement.
So, state goes through, I'm in an R1, I, we, we get preempted, we go back to 2011, it's outlawed in 2011.
Right.
And now, what is your recommendation of what we do on, we can't, they can, they can't, they can do vacation rentals, with the exception of us, because we stopped it in 2011.
That's right. Now, unless something happens to one of those two bills that does away with that grandfather clause.
I understand, but let's assume, I mean, if it goes away with the grandfather, it's typical state legislature.
Yep.
So now, I can go do what I want to, but then I just get caught by code enforcement? And, I mean, we have to figure out some way of, of tracking that in such a way that is efficient to the city.
That's right. And that's status quo as of today.
Right, but we can't charge them registration because it's illegal.
That's right.
Thank you, State. All right, thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry for taking so long.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Don't worry, it's gonna take me longer. Jason, please clarify for me, how are commercial dwelling units, hotel motels, and bed and breakfast zoned, as it stands right now?
Let me go back and pull up a presentation from last time, where I think I can provide a little bit more clarity.
Okay, I think that was on, yep, okay.
Okay, up on your screen right now is the different zoning districts where these different uses are allowed. So the commercial dwelling unit is allowed in the O3, the most intense office district, MU1, MU2, those are your typical commercial corridors, and your activity centers, ACN, AC1, and so forth. There are conditional uses in the MXD2 district, which would be your Eola South types of districts, the O1 and O2, those are your smaller office districts, but they're still prohibited in all residential zoning districts. So those are the entire units being rented out as a vacation rental under the state law as it's stated today.
I noticed when you were showing Commissioner Stewart the other slide, that no, our type was allowed according to our ordinance, right?
Correct.
So, so we would be adding the bed and breakfast, those zoning codifications, that we would be adding those.
There are very specific differences, though. The commercial dwelling unit is where the entire unit is, is lessed out to somebody, whereas in the residential zoning districts, you would be limited to only a subordinate amount of bedrooms, and the host has to be on site. So those locations would be allowed a limited amount of.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna stop you there, because that's, that's not gonna make my point.
Okay.
What I'm getting at is, so those, you know, commercial dwelling units, hotel motel, bed and breakfast, basically, they include everything but R1.
Correct.
Okay. So here comes, Mayor and Commissioners, I propose a motion to amend ordinance 2018-3 regarding home sharing for short-term rentals to allow owner occupied home sharing only in multifamily residential. I move to amend the ordinance to strike lines 63, 64, and 67. That would be attached dwelling units, mobile home dwelling, and one-family dwelling.
And?
We would basically keep it the way you have it here.
I mean, then there'd be no reason to pass the ordinance. And the, the other issue with that is that you're missing whether or not you would strike two-family dwelling units, which would be duplexes, and if you were to illegal, or make it illegal to do it in attached dwelling units, we might have a Burt Harris claim because attached dwelling units are allowed in several of the O zoning districts. So you might be removing a use that would be allowed today.
Okay, well, take the attached dwelling units and put them back, and just leave the one-family dwelling there, out of the, single-family homes, is what I'm getting at. The sanctity of residential areas where they don't have to expect any kind of commerce in any way, shape, or form, where people can live knowing that their families will not be threatened by any kind of commercialization within the neighborhood.
Okay, we were actually on questions for Jason and not at the mandatory process, but I didn't see anybody else that wanted questions, so we can move into the mandatory process. Let me do this, though, before we take up your motion, Commissioner, were there any members of the public that had put in cards that wanted to speak?
No.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that wants to testify? Okay, all right, let's move into the mandatory process. So now we're proper. Commissioner Ortiz has offered a motion that has not yet been seconded, which would delete short-term rentals from pretty much all the residential areas.
From, from all single-family.
Single-family. Single-family, so.
Line 67, only?
At least, basically, commercial areas and multifamily.
Uh, one-family dwelling, that's it.
Okay, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second, sorry, Commissioner Ortiz.
That's fine.
We tried.
We try.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart, you wanna try yours?
Yeah, I, following the last meeting, I had not realized where we were going, and I saw the wording, and it had made some changes to me, so let me just read this statement real quickly. I propose a motion to amend the ordinance that's presented, to remove lines 82 through 87, in other words, remove the ability for two-family dwelling units owner occupied home sharing and permitted for the entire dwelling unit if the property owner occupies the other dwelling unit, and the living area of the unit for the owner occupied home sharing is equal less value other dwelling units, two dwelling units must be under the same ownership. So I propose, make a motion that we remove lines 82 through 87, go back to the original presentation that was done at the last meeting.
And just to clarify, that would, there's a typo, it would actually be line 80 through 86, but the same.
Eighty-two, yeah, eighty-seven's the blank line.
A second clause.
The language is the correct language, so line 80 through 86. So a second for that one? Motion dies for lack of a second. All right, Commissioner Rings, you're up.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, I propose a motion to amend the ordinance number 2018-3 regarding home sharing for short-term rentals to include new language regarding the number of people allowed in a single booking. I move to amend the ordinance to add the following language at line 87. No more than four unrelated persons are allowed in a single booking, or a maximum of two persons per room, whichever is less.
Jason, what's the current, what's in the ordinance right now?
Well, right now, we would probably be defaulting to our normal single-family and dwelling unit requirements are that no more than five unrelated persons are allowed within a, a single dwelling unit. I think what Commissioner Ings is getting at here is that you would be allowed four plus one, because that would be the host, right?
Right.
The state itself, in their proposed LaRosa and SB 1400 by Stube, has a two-per-person limit in that current law that's being contemplated right now. They just don't count persons under the age of 12, just, just to let you know. Those are some of the precedents that are out there that I'm familiar with.
Although, if you're under the age of 12, you're likely related to one of the other persons.
Most likely.
That would probably not hit you.
Exactly.
Okay, is there a second for Commissioner Rings's motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
All right, I have a question, if I could.
Yes.
To Commissioner Rings, how do we, how do you propose we enforce that? I understand your concept. What are your thoughts on enforcement? It's great to have rules, how do we enforce them?
Right, the, the enforcement actually, obviously, is gonna come through code enforcement, and also neighbors in the community. They will tell us how many people, just like what's happening now, when we have code issues, we get a lot of concerning comments coming from constituents that outline certain problems and that kind of thing. And specifically, because, you know, you can actually have a, a rental, and you have 10 to 20 people in there. But I, but I think what's really important is that we do limit the number of people that go into that, that unit. And again, it's through our constituents, our neighbors, that will contact us, that will make complaints to code enforcement, that will make complaints to Commissioners, who will reach out to code enforcement to get these issues resolved.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Just a question, I, I can, I can support limiting per person per bedroom, but what if it's a four-bedroom dwelling? What if it's a five-bedroom dwelling? I can, I could see the two-per-person, you know, but saying if a family of five or six come, and they can't sleep on a let-out sofa, and you have those in many of the AR, Airbnb, oh God, you have to talk tight, but you have those, you have, you have them in the hotel.
Well, if it's a family, he's not hitting the families because it's four unrelated persons or two per bedroom.
I got you.
So, I think the idea is if there's 20 college kids.
Okay, no, I don't support that, so if it's a family, yeah.
And Mayor, if I can just, just chime in for a moment, just to clarify one thing, the way we have written this, this would.
Oh yeah, all the people attending the, the meeting today, if all of those 20 people out there wanted to try to stay in one vacation rental.
No, but if it's a family, I can see.
Spring break is coming.
There you go.
But, okay, sorry, Kyle.
That's all right. The, the way this is written now, with our current regulation of a single-family home being occupied by no more than five unrelated persons, this would prohibit bookings of four unrelated persons. So you could have a family living in a home, say a four-member household, a family, and they could have four people come in and visit them. So you could have more than five people in the, in the home, if there you'd only have eight. But we have a backup regulation that is in our minimum standards code that says that no dwelling unit can ever have more people than one person per 100 square feet of area. So you have that other backup sort of belt and suspenders. But this could result in more than five people being in the house, as long as you meet this requirement, no more than two per bedroom, and then, of course, the bedrooms that they are occupying have to be subordinate in number to the overall house. So in other words, if you have a four-bedroom house, you'd have, you'd let out one room. If you had a five-bedroom house, you could let out two, two rooms, okay?
Okay, so this makes it, makes the short-term rental consistent with a long-term rental or a owner occupied home, right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Stewart?
Okay, I, I go back to the enforcement side. Okay, so assuming that this passes, that enforcement is done, how, Jason? How do we find that information out?
What I would propose, if, if this were to pass, is that during the registration process, that we would have to have that posted, and people would have to do a, a listing on the Airbnb sites consistent, because even holding out and advertising one, and that's not consistent with the ordinance, would be a, a code enforcement violation.
Yeah, but I, I can't imagine you catching that, so I, so I'm gonna go the other way around. So, there is a bunch of unrelated people there who may or may not be in college, because the college kids are really very bright and they would not do this.
Very bright.
Right, college kids? They already live here, they haven't gotta go someplace else. And they call code enforcement, or they call the police, because there's now a party next door. Now, answer that question. Now, what happens?
It's not necessarily my proposal, but.
I mean, enforcement, enforcement happens to be, I mean, I've got, I'm gonna share a letter when I give some of my comments.
What we would need to do is to put into the registration process not only the amount of bedrooms, but how many persons are actually allowed to, and make sure that that's disclosed, I think. So if, if you wanna have a bachelorette party of four people, that might be fine, but if you want a bachelorette party of five people, you possibly couldn't do it, if you didn't invite your sisters.
Yeah, but if it's one booking, and, you know, it's one booking and one person then shows up and does the entire booking, and they all pay her back.
Certainly.
And the next thing you know, you've got eight or 10 people in the rooms.
Correct. A lot of, and just, just so you know, when you go to an Airbnb or VRBO type of site, sometimes they'll come with limitations as to how many people they'll accept and things like that. Those, those types, that type of information would likely have to be posted with, with, with the requirements. So I think that's the best way to handle it, so that people just won't rent inside the city when they have greater than four unrelated persons.
I think you're incredibly naive, so I'm gonna say they're gonna rent anyway.
Yes.
And now the next-door neighbor calls, how is that now, how is that enforced? Police officer shows up and says, you guys aren't related, three of you leave?
Commissioner, I think all this stuff is gonna be problematic in enforcement anyways, but at least gives us some rules to try to live by. So the flagrant one where 20 people cram into the second side of a duplex, and the neighbor on the other side calls in, then at least we have some rule about it, rather than trying to stretch it and say, okay, they were violating the noise ordinance or some other type of thing. Because on this one, quite honestly, they could say, oh, they're not staying here, they're just over here visiting, so, I mean.
I understand, I just, I happened to have an email from somebody exactly that situation, and they don't know what to do.
Agreed, it would be, it would be difficult to enforce during, during a code enforcement inspection or something that happened, or an active complaint basis.
Quick question, would code enforcement have access to his places?
To the registration listings? Correct.
To those who are registered, would code enforcement can unannounced come in and inspect?
Not without the property.
Would they have the right? I know, I would imagine there's a Fourth Amendment.
Yeah, they couldn't unless they got an inspection warrant.
Take it?
Code enforcement would not be allowed in to start counting heads unless they got permission.
No, 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 not for, not for that kind of inspection, just, I wanna check on codes inside the.
Imagine a manpower.
Just like a hotel, you know, just like, no, okay.
No, not without an inspection warrant.
All right. Commissioner Hill?
No, I never.
Commissioner Gray?
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in. Look, with all due respect to the, the amendments that have been offered, I mean, the difficulty here to me seems to be, we wanna give people who own property the right to lease their buildings if they want to, for whatever their reasons, but at the same time, we wanna try to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. We spend a lot of time working on neighborhoods, neighborhoods, and it seems to me it's, it's hard to, no matter what kind of rules we come up with, to really enforce those are difficult. So I think the best solution that I've heard is by asking the owner to be on site, and we put it on the owner's shoulders to find out, how many is the right people, or a number of people, make sure they behave themselves, because I think it's, it's just naive to think code enforcement will respond to every neighbor's complaint. I mean, you'll get folks that'll call and say, I know there's 10 people over there. Well, there might be 10, there might be 20, there might be two. It just seems like that's gonna run our code enforcement. So I think we go back and put it on the owner, and let the owner decide what's appropriate for their property, and it's a balance between letting people use their property, but at the same time, having some rules to keep the neighborhoods intact, so that's my two cents.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, I, I totally agree, I think we should go ahead and pass this today, and then there's always an opportunity for us to go back and amend if there's several complaints. Let's say a owner get two or three complaints, that we take away their opportunity to be a registrant of some sort, but we can always readdress that, as that, so, as far as giving code enforcement some type of teeth for those that reoffend or allow their renter, not renters, but what would we call them? Because they're not true renters, when we say how many days they have.
So you're talking about potential folks that are, are complicit in coming to the ordinance, and they're, they're re-offenders, if you would, a three-strike. and they're re-offenders, if you would, a three-strikes-and-you're-out type of a situation. In our talks with Airbnb and some of the other platforms, they say if we do come across an offender that reoccurs, that there's so far as if you have a problem tenant, or a problem person that's doing something like that, you can always have them to ask to have them removed off the site if there's some good cause and a record for that, because they're not interested in exacerbating that issue with us locally.
Okay, you guys remember what we're on? We're on Commissioner Ings's amendment that prohibits more than four unrelated persons. The fifth would be the owner of the dwelling, or a maximum of two persons per room. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Five-two, passes. Okay, I did have one appearance request card that came in late, and I'll go ahead and allow that. Cindy Barnett?
Yeah.
Come on up. Just give us your name and address, your handwriting's not so great, by the way.
Oh, man.
And you get five minutes.
Okay, my name is Cindy Barnett.
Miss, just come to the mic, so we can hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, hi.
Just pull that down. There you go, perfect.
Well, yeah, I just, okay, this is nerve-wracking for me, but, yeah, I didn't understand, you know, why you were so against it, because I've started with the Airbnb, and it has been a wonderful lifesaver. Now, I am a host that's present, and I do monitor my guests. My guests have been, they, there's not much difference from people with the foreign exchange students, because I get a lot of, you know, young people, students from China, it's their only child, they want them safe, and they would rather come to our home. And also, I get a lot of students from Yale, Harvard, all the Ivy League schools, they come, and a lot of them are doctors that attend the convention center, you know, all these conventions that happen. It's, what I'm trying to say is, my husband and I have also had rental properties. In fact, I was even robbed at gunpoint after collecting rent from one of my rental properties, and it was, you know, it was in the Pine Hills area, but they followed me to check the way, and they robbed me at gunpoint, thankfully, you know, no shots, no bullets, nothing like that, but do you know, I still had to go through the eviction. They even caught her and her brother, there were five people, and I did have to go through the eviction process to get them out, even though the police had them in custody right then, you know, they still, it still took them a month to out of my property. But, you know, it doesn't matter race, color, nothing matters, neither does the areas, it happens everywhere. And their town has been a real problem also, because we had multifamily, and I would have to... If you want drugs, and alcohol, and problems with partying, prostitution, whatever, you get out your multifamily, you get out your homes, I mean, not homes, but single-guillotine multifamily. Airbnb are not there to party, they're not there. They're there for two days, they go to the convention, they go to meetings, they go to the parks, they are constantly giving business to our community. They're at Disney, Universal, SeaWorld, and they are there from seven, their serious part, seven to 11 at night. I mean, they come and they want to sleep. It's been great, because we had to replace our AC, my husband and I are almost retirement age, $5,000, we had to lay out on new, the new circuit breakers, because our builder used older ones that, you know, it's out of, anyway, angle, he used older ones, and so, 20 years old, so we had to replace all that, and our AC came to about $5,000. Let me tell you, the Airbnb gives money to keep us in our homes, pay our renovations or maintenance, it has been wonderful. If you, you know, if people aren't worth that, then they're going to, then hey, like, come on, you know, we're going out to a bedroom, put you on a year lease. Go to the, go see how long it takes to get someone that abuses, okay, they'll invite their friend, you know, they'll use the home, they, in other words, they're one car, turn into about three cars, because then they'll have their friend, their girlfriend parking, then, you know, you have a four-bedroom, then you got three other bedrooms, where you're going to have, you're going to have 10 cars there, because the people today, they have no respect. Come, I have this great house, come on, we have a pool party. You know, that's where you're going to get the problems, you're going to get the problems where people will start running out bedrooms for a month, for years in their homes, and that's where you're going to get the extra vehicles, and you will get the extra, the parties, and you don't pay for to do a thing about it, because our eviction laws will need amending, because that's where it's going to be difficult to get people out. The Airbnb, they, you know, I just can't stress it enough, they are not there that long, they don't know that many friends to have a party, and you're not going to have problems with that. Anyway, thank you. I wasn't prepared for this.
That's okay, your testimony was fantastic, because you're actually participating in the industry.
Outside of mentioning Pine Hills and robbers, I was fine with it.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Ma'am, you were wonderful. You made my case, at the same time, you advertise Airbnb, which I think they're great also, but you proved my point. It's not Airbnb who I'm worried about, it's about other circumstances. You just mentioned it, you just mentioned all those cases there, but thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, let's move on to discussion and debate, and then close this out. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, I, let me just share a couple of things, and I want you to read one paragraph from a lady who lives next to a duplex. And while I believe that, much like Commissioner Gray, that there's some issues that we want to address, and I'm just really concerned about this duplex idea. It is a separate dwelling unit, is considered a separate dwelling unit by everything we do. The issues of eviction, I think, were raised, it's a good point, if somebody moves in on Airbnb and stays three days and decides not to move out, how do you evict them out of the house? You don't have a choice to do that, you haven't got a vehicle mechanism to do that. I'm concerned about the taxes, but let me just read this thing. "In summary, Airbnb as an alternative to overpriced motel shouldn't mean the destabilization of their neighborhood, this case in Park Lake Island, or any traditional city neighborhood. We ask that you assist this effort to protect our neighborhoods and other Orlando neighborhoods." And given the information, this is a small duplex, it rents for 90 bucks plus a deposit and all the rest of that stuff, it's okay, but the next-door neighbor doesn't have control of it. I think we've got some things, I think Jason's done a good job getting us in the right spot, but the one thing that continues to concern me is duplexes. It's a separate legal address, it's a separate location. My opinion is that we should not add that at this time, until we see what happens to the state of Florida, because it may all be preempted. It's something you can always add. Once you add it, you cannot take it back. You run the risk of having a similar argument, where I could buy four townhomes, rent one, I mean, live in one, and rent the other four, but it's all under the same property owner, you could have a pretty good argument, you could accomplish the task, that you could do this. And the reason is they just aren't connected by a hallway. So I'm really concerned about that. I don't think we should be allowing people in duplexes to, because it allows them to have greater ownership and flexibility of their property as a duplex. We do take, out of our inventory, Jason was very clear of that, you take out of our city's inventory, the potential of moving these properties into short-term rental. I'm concerned about not paying taxes, I'm concerned about just cursory-reading the last session of the state, that they have, these people who have this, the state goes through, have to abide by local hotel laws. I could imagine that would be, that the registration has to be open to the public, which is part of that thing, the registry does, but we may have to go back and take every one of these, if the state goes through, and make everyone handicapped accessible, because I think a hotel is handicapped accessible. All those become, these questions, I, we just have a lot of questions in mind. I believe we're on the right track, and with the exception of the duplexes, I think that having a host in the building is an important part of making this successful. So I'm still struggling with where I want to be with this, because I think we opened Pandora's box on this particular use, to go to duplex, quadplex, take your list, if I live in the building and there are six other locations, I could make an argument that I ought to be able to lease out all six and run a six-room hotel, or a six-building hotel. And that scares me to death. Whenever I've asked about it in the neighborhoods, the answer has been Airbnb's cute, I like it someplace else, but don't want it in my neighborhood. And I think that we've got a pretty good balance in moving forward with it. I just, I think that duplex use makes short-term commercial use of a short-term commercial property, and for that, I'm just really struggling whether I'm going to support it or not.
Commissioner Sheen?
According to the duplex statistics from 2014, which are probably low compared to now, we only have 18% of the duplexes that are actually owner-occupied, which was the original intent for an owner to live on one side, and then to bring an extra income on the other. Most of the problem we've had is the rentals, they get out of control, we get them full of kids, and it's the 254 rentals on both sides that's starting to be the problem in most of my neighborhoods, that people are complaining about. So I think this is a way to encourage owner-occupied duplexes, and I think this is an opportunity to allow people to go back to what duplexes were intended to be, which was owner-occupied. So, that's why I made the amendment, I think it's a good way to, and I also like the idea of accessory cottages, and having people be able to rent those out. And I wish we could get, you know, the property appraiser in Orange County to say that this is one property, and enable them to homestead the whole thing, so that they get a tax break too. So, that's why I made the amendment, I feel strongly that I want to have owner occupation, because I think that's what helps stabilize the neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, and we're on the main motion as amended by Commissioner Ings's amendment. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I got that six-one, is that right?
I voted yes.
Commissioner Ortiz? Okay, six-one with Commissioner Ortiz voting no. Okay, let's see how many streets Commissioner Gray can change the name of in the city. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to a street name change, renaming Weller Boulevard, generally located west of Norquese Road between Valencia College and Lake Nona High School to Nemours Parkway, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to a street name change, renaming Hartwell Court, generally located south of Lorient Boulevard and east of the Lake Nona VA Hospital to Centerline Drive, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number four.
Ordinance 2018-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to signs, amending Chapter 64 Orlando City Code to clarify the standards for signage on regional facilities, providing legislative findings, and for severability codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number five.
Ordinance 2018-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located south of East Colonial Drive, east of North Magnolia Avenue, north of Hillcrest Street, and west of Irma Avenue, comprised of 1.42 acres of land, more or less, from office high intensity to downtown activity center, creating sub-area policy S dot 14 dot 18 to encompass the subject property, providing for amendment of the city's future land use maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, let's go to ordinances on first reading. Number one.
Ordinance 2018-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of East Colonial Drive, east of North Magnolia Avenue, north of Hillcrest Street, and west of Irma Avenue, and comprised of 1.42 acres of land, more or less, from O dash three slash T office and residential with a traditional city overlay district to planned development with a traditional city overlay district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Ordinance 2018-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to regional public facility designation and signage, approving exterior sign package for the designated regional public facility, Barnett Park pursuant to Section 64.320 Orlando City Code, providing for penalty severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2018-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located south of West Colonial Drive, west of northwest Moreland Drive, north of Arlington Street, and east of North Orange Blossom Trail, comprised of 2.73 acres of land, more or less, from industrial and mixed-use corridor medium intensity to mixed-use corridor medium intensity, changing the property zoning designation from general industrial zoning district to medium intensity mixed-use corridor zoning district with a traditional city and paramour heritage overlay districts to medium intensity mixed-use corridor zoning district with a traditional city and paramour heritage overlay districts, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. And number four.
Ordinance 2018-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located south of East Livingston Street, north of East Ridgewood Street, and east of North Rosaline Avenue, and comprised of 1.79 acres of land, more or less, changing the property zoning designation from downtown metropolitan activity center with a traditional city overlay district in part, medium intensity office residential with a traditional city overlay district in part, and planned development with a traditional city overlay district in part, to the planned development district with a traditional city overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, and so, the motion carries. And that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.